Good evening, Danvers. Welcome to the September 3, 2019, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Bill, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Approval of the minutes of August 6?
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you.
Dan, could I just make a comment?
Yes, you may.
That these minutes are a lot of work. They come out promptly. From my experience, they're always accurate. And so, Joe, whoever you have helping you, they do a wonderful job. Thank you.
So I think that would be Kathy. That dictates your notes, then she can read them.
The object is, Mr. Chairman, you do them very quickly the next morning, because if you don't do them quickly, the minutes become hours.
Very good. Thank you, Joe, and Kathy for that.
How long have you been waiting to say that?
I've said that many times.
It's got a new audience saying, that's all.
There you go. At this time, anybody in the audience with new public business that's not on the agenda can go to the microphone. Hearing none, we'll move on to number three. The board is requested to accept two gifts to the senior center in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, two gifts tonight. The first is an anonymous donation in the amount of $500 going toward the transportation fund. And the second is a very generous $48,110 donation from the estate of Rosanna E. Massey. And that is the second of two similarly sized donations that she dedicated to the senior center specifically to the nutrition program through her estate. So these funds will be segregated in a special account. And we've been discussing at the staff level ways to grow the very popular cafe program moving forward utilizing existing staffing, potentially some new staffing, and specifically these gifts to make that happen. So this was expected based on last year's first installment, but certainly appreciated. It's a very generous donation.
Yes, it is very generous indeed. Diane, any comments?
Yeah, before you go on, so my understanding is, because now when somebody passes, you can dedicate some funds to that transportation fund, there's some sort of a shortage going on with that, is my understanding, and that's why they've been selling chicken pot pies and all that. Can you tell us what that shortage is?
The revolving account for the transportation fund, there is a balance in that account, but it has been shrinking, not precipitously, but it has been declining over the last few years. And it's driven in part by the, Danvers isn't unique, but a lot of towns have had a hard time recruiting and retaining drivers. So we've had to increase the hourly rate that we paid to drivers over the last few years. We have not, you know, it's a donation basis right now for those rides. So we've kept them probably lower than they can sustainably be. So the staff, the council, we're looking at ways to, you know, the pot pies are one example of that. But we also have, the planning directors from the three cities in Danvers have been meeting to talk about sort of different types of changes we might consider as a group moving forward to try to address that, not just here, but across the region.
Because it's a great service.
It's a phenomenal service. Do 13,000 to 15,000 unique rides a year. Very well received, but you know, the cost currently isn't sustainable in terms of the rides being free or donations only.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Move to accept.
Well, David, we've got to let the other selectmen have a chance.
Oh.
But you, any comments?
None for me, thank you.
Thank you. Gardner?
All set.
Well, thank you. What's the will of the board? David?
Move to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll send the appropriate letter, and I don't know if sending one to the estate or not, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Town Manager.
We will send a letter.
Thank you. Number four, a public hearing will be held on the application of G.C. Fridays, Boston LLC DBA TGI Fridays, 49 Newbury Street, John Savage, manager for a change of manager of all alcoholic alcohol and vicuums license at location. Is everything in order, Mr. Clerk?
Everything is in order.
Thank you. Is there somebody here to speak to this? Please go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Caroline O'Connell. I'm representing the licensee, and with me is John Savage, who is the proposed new manager.
Welcome.
This is a fairly simple change of manager. John's been with Fridays for, since 1997, so, you know, two decades with Fridays. He's just being transferred from a different location and taking over the Danvers location.
Okay.
If you have any questions for him, he's here before the board.
Bill?
No questions.
Gardner?
No, I see by the application, my common question is about being served safe or tip certified as satisfied, and you'll be on the premise 50 hours, you'll be on the premise 50 hours a week?
Correct.
It is quite a haul from Raymond, New Hampshire down to Danvers, but, all right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Diane?
No, good luck. You're welcome.
David?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public have any questions?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. What's the will of the board?
Move as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, welcome to Danvers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. A public hearing will be held in accordance with Section 2 of the Rules and Orders Governing Private Livery Service within the town of Danvers on the application of B.A.T. Enterprises LLC, Christopher Fofoc, owner, 498 Elliott Street, Beverly, to license up to one passenger van to travel on all streets in the town of Danvers to provide transportation on a reservation basis only. Is everything in order, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, everything is in order.
Is somebody here to speak to that? Please go to the microphone.
That gentleman right there.
Thank you. Welcome, introduce yourself to the members at home.
Good evening, member. My name is Christopher Fofoc. I'm the owner of B.A.T. Enterprise Company LLC. I work for, I work in Danvers as a community servant. I'm married with four kids, so I'm working to here because I want to continue to serve our community, and I hope the board can give me the opportunity to continue to serve our community.
Okay, thank you. Gardner?
Will the vehicles be stored in Beverly when not in use, or in Danvers?
In Beverly.
Beverly, okay. And it's only by reservation basis only? I have no questions, good luck.
Thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions, good luck.
David?
Same, thank you.
Diane?
Is this to the airport, or is this like a taxi service?
Just, it's like a school service, taxi service.
Oh, yeah, I think you, somebody was here before.
For special needs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have no questions. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have questions?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Will of the board?
Move we accept the application as presented?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The board is in receipt of an application by Saru Majan, 407 Pleasant Street, Melrose, Mass, for a one-day wine and malt liquor license on Saturday, September 14, 2019, 6:00 to 8:00, for a birthday party at Endicott Park, 57 Forest Street. Is everything in order, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Saru's a bit under the weather this evening, and I believe she sent her husband.
Oh, okay.
He'll speak to it.
So please go to the microphone, introduce yourself, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Oh, that's okay. Hi, my name is Garv Sharma, and I'm here representing my wife.
So just tell us briefly what it is you want to do.
Oh, it's just a birthday party we're having for our friends, and we're having it in Endicott Park, and we wanted to get a liquor license. I believe we have the signatures of the police chief, fire chief, border fella, it's all been checked out.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. David, any questions?
Yes, whose birthday is it?
It's my wife's.
Oh, how nice.
It's not a surprise, then.
It's not.
And you were, and you were gonna make her come to get her own permit?
Uh, I...
I know now why she's under the weather. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off before you say something you shouldn't.
And there's, there's a surprise coming for her that she doesn't know, doesn't involve this.
All right, good. All set, Diane?
Yeah.
Thank you. Gardner?
Yep, I can see, I have the question, who's gonna be doing the serving?
We have a, we have a bartender who is insured and tip certified.
Thank you.
That's the question I had.
All set, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
I will, we accept the application as presented?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck, and happy birthday to your wife.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The board is in receipt of an application by D.C.A.T., 87 Elm Street, Gaila Bartlett, manager, for a one-day wine and malt license on Thursday, October 10, 2019, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for an Oktoberfest event at that location. Gaila, if you'd please go to the microphone and introduce yourself in case there's somebody out there that doesn't know you.
Hello, my name is Gaila Bartlett. I'm the underwriting coordinator and the community outreach person for D.C.A.T. I'm not the manager.
Welcome.
But that's okay, thank you. So we are having our second annual Oktoberfest event on Thursday, October 10, from 6:00 to 8:00 at D.C.A.T. Last year, the recipient of half the proceeds was Habitat for Humanity for sure, and this year, we're working on Council on Aging's Transportation Fund.
Oh, thank you.
So very apropos for what you were talking about earlier. They're very excited to come, and we're excited to work with another nonprofit to spread their mission and vision, and help them get some exposure and raise some funds. My mom is a senior and takes the senior shuttle, so I know how viable and as important it is to her, so it's something that hits home to me. So we're very excited to work with them. This year, the tickets are going to be $15. Cappy's of Peabody is donating all the liquor, and Carl's Sausage Kitchen is giving us all the lovely German food. We're going to have gourmet delights again as our caterer, and they are tip certified and hold the liquor liability insurance, so they did it last year for us as well, so we're very excited to have them back. So we are hoping to have at least 40 to 50 people there, so we can spread the joy and have some fun for Oktoberfest at D.C.A.T.
Great. Questions, Diane?
Did you say all of the funds are going to go to the transportation?
A portion of the proceeds.
Proceeds, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
David?
I appreciate, you know, your assistance to the mobility fund at the senior center, because we've been hurting a little bit and worried about funding. Thank you.
Bill?
No, no questions, wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Gardner?
No, Gaila answered all my questions right out of the gate, I'm all set.
Thank you, Gaila. And thank you for supporting the senior center transportation fund. For disclosure, I'm on the Friends of the Danvers Community Council on Aging, and I'm aware of this problem, and I'm happy to see that D.C.A.T. is stepping up, and this year I'll be there.
Woo-hoo.
So come by and get my check, my, my check, my tickets.
Your tickets, yep, absolutely.
I'll bring a check. Thank you. Any other questions? What's the will of the board?
Move as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gaila, for everything you do.
Thank you.
A public hearing will be held on the application of Danvers I.C.L. 1 LLC DBA North Auto Annex 241 Newbury Street, Danvers, Richard Collins, President, for a Class II dealer's license at that location. This location previously held a Class II dealer's license by Detor Cars LLC DBA Auto Factory. Is everything in order, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, everything is in, is in order, and with a couple of points of information for the board, and this is with information we've received from Richard Maloney, our code administration and building inspector. The total number of cars at that location would be 158. That would be including storage and sales. And included in our packet or the application packet is a letter from the landlord that indicates that Auto Factory is gone, and a letter from Honda Motors, which will permit only sales of used cars at that location. Everything else is in order.
Okay, thank you. Somebody here to speak to this?
Yes.
Please go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Diane, where is this property?
Sullivan's Garage.
Hi, I'm Joe Haja, general manager of Honda North.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Elaborate on what you want to do.
So we're gonna just run a used car operation. We have, we took the property over, and underneath, in the bottom of the property, we're storing new cars. We're just gonna do used cars on the front of the property.
So this property is, in its former days, was Sullivan's Garage?
Right.
Next to what was originally the Village Green, now Breakaways?
Yes.
And are you aware that there's some type of covenants that allows traffic to cross from?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are.
Very good, thank you. Gardner?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
No questions, good luck up there.
Thank you.
David?
No, thank you.
Diane?
No, all set, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public have any questions? Hearing none?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. What's the will of the board?
Move we accept the application as presented?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
The board will hear from the police chief regarding a liquor violation or multiple, Mr. Mayor?
A liquor violation.
Welcome, chief, please introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Good evening, Pat, Danvers Police. Everybody get a packet.
Yes, I believe so.
As part of our liquor establishment checks, we conducted alcohol compliance checks on August 5 of this year. There was a public notification made prior to us doing so that went out, sent out to the press on July 17. On August 5, at approximately 17:23 hours, there was a typo on the sheet, I think it says 19:23 hours, should say 17:23. An 18-year-old female that was with Sergeant Baldassari and Officer Chase, they went to the Mexicali Restaurant on 1429 Andover Street in Danvers. This female entered the establishment, approached the bar, sat down, asked the bartender for a Bud Light bottle. The Bud Light was delivered. She never produced a license, she never produced an ID, she was never requested to have her license shown to the bartender. The officers entered the establishment, identified themselves, spoke to the manager, who was Aurelia Margarita Lepe Maldonado, and also identified the bartender, Delacruz Flores. They asked for a receipt for the delivery of the Bud Light. It had not even been rung up at this point in time. They identified that they would be forwarding this to my, to my attention, which then I would be bringing to the Board of Selectmen for a violation or a potential violation, for you to determine. And everything else was in compliance at the establishment. Specifically, I sent them a notice of a violation for the 204 C.M.R., 2.052, permitting an illegality on the license premise to, with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 3434(c), selling or furnishing an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21. Those are essentially the facts. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. David, any questions for the chief?
No, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Gardner?
Chief, often we see these, and it's the fact that someone's paid, gotten a certain amount of change, returned to the officers outside. Is it normal that they, or is it within parameters that they actually don't pay? I see here now, as I'm reading it, selling or furnishing, so it would be under furnishing. But commonly, you have, the person who goes in for the compliance check buys and returns with a certain amount of change.
They don't, they don't always go and buy. Sometimes it's just the furnishing. It's dependent on how they were instructed when they went out during that night. This particular case, if it was delivered and if it was dropped off in front of them, they were the get-up-and-exit. They weren't supposed to touch it, they weren't supposed to do anything, they weren't supposed to engage the employee with any conversation, they were just to go immediately report their finding to the officers that were outside the door.
Thank you. I have no other questions, thank you very much.
Diane?
Are we, did we end up doing a suspension on, isn't this, they were before us within the last year?
There was no action taken, right.
No action taken. Do we know if it's the same bartender? I don't have to know it now, because I'm gonna move that we bring it forward, but that's something that I would like to know if I'm, if that is something that I could know.
And if the manager was the same manager that day as well?
Right, I just, you know, I don't...
No, it was not the same bartender.
Not the same bartender, good.
But it was the same manager, the Aurelia Lepe Maldonado.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll be seeing to move it forward.
All right, go right ahead. Anybody else have any questions? We're all set.
I move that we have all parties come in and, I don't know what day you're opening.
What would the appropriate next meeting, Mr. Town Manager?
With the, we could, we could aim for the first meeting, either the 17th of September, or if that feels too soon, we could aim for the first meeting in October.
I don't think the 17th is too soon unless you have a lot on the agenda that night.
I don't believe we do.
Let's, if it's all right with the board, let's do it.
It's up to you.
Okay, the 17th, then.
That good for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while the, the agenda listed one violation, one current violation, but it's written generically enough that I'd like to take an opportunity, while the chief is still here, to give you an update on some other materials you received this evening.
I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Town, I asked you the question, then we didn't vote to bring them here, to make it official?
Yes, that's not a bad...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Continue, Mr. Town Manager.
So before we move on, you received a couple of updates in your packets, you should have received them just this evening. The first is a notification from the A.B.C.C. of a local establishment, IPOTC, that I believe was also an underage service related to one of their stings. They will routinely do stings in communities as part of their oversight jurisdiction. So there, as you'll note in the correspondence here, there has been a hearing scheduled in Boston on November 5 for this particular incident. This incident would be outside of the Selectmen's jurisdiction, as it was an A.B.C.C. operation. But in the event that the A.B.C.C. chose to take action as a result of this, that would, moving forward, be considered a first offense in the eyes of this local authority. So just, that's more just as an FYI. You'll note that that occurred on July 31, and the town was notified in mid-August that it had happened, and so that in early November, they'll have their meeting date. And then, you also received tonight, I provided a quick update to the board over the weekend, but we did receive notification from the A.B.C.C. that related to the Osborne Tavern and two incidents that occurred there last November. There had been an incident in July of 2018 resulting in a one-day suspension held in abeyance. There were two incidents that required police response in November, and at that time, the board voted to issue a, issue the one-day suspension to be served in January, which it was, and which was not appealed, and also a three-day suspension and three days, three-day suspension to be served and a three-day suspension to be held in abeyance. Those were appealed by the Osborne Tavern. The A.B.C.C. did find, did not find that there were violations according to their criteria that occurred on those dates, and therefore did not, they disapproved of the actions taken by this board. So you just received the written text from the A.B.C.C. tonight. I had a brief conversation this afternoon with council to discuss sort of what the next steps look like with respect to this action taken by the A.B.C.C. Incidentally, some of you may have seen it in the newspaper, the chief hasn't had a chance to prepare the written report, but two days after, we received notification from the A.B.C.C. that they did, would not uphold the decision. Police were called to an additional incident at the Osborne Tavern due to some intoxicated patrons, and it required a call to 911 and a police response. So we, at the next meeting, can talk about potentially scheduling a hearing. My recommendation would be that we schedule a hearing, and that'll give the chief and council and I an opportunity to prepare some thoughts for the board in terms of what, if any, action may or may not be required as a result of the recent decision. And then, of course, the incident that the chief hasn't had a chance to write up yet for your review will be something for consideration at that point. So I, we'd be happy to answer any, any generic questions at this point, but I wanted to offer some context for the materials that you received this evening.
So I read the report, you know, of course, I'm gonna rely on council and the police chief. I guess, if I'm asking something, I'm not supposed to tell me. I guess I don't understand how we would know at the time that a drink is served, that someone is intoxicated at that point, and that was where I got a little confused. So I'm gonna rely on council to explain that to me, because we're not in there till after, and so every time that comes in front of us, we wouldn't be able to do anything. So I guess I need to, I mean, the police aren't sitting there when that happens. So somebody has to explain that to me before we can move forward.
We discussed on the phone today, I think in the, there's a legal threshold and then there's a reasonable person threshold.
Yeah.
So the A.B.C.C., I think it's helpful, the response they've offered the town cites quite a few cases that have been before them, and I was pointing out to Selectmen Clerk at the beginning of the meeting, if you look at page 5, beginning of the final paragraph, they offer three very specific criteria that have to be met to make a determination that over-serving has occurred. The person has to be intoxicated on the premise, the server has to reasonably know that that person was intoxicated, and then choose to continue to serve them anyway. Nobody has disputed the fact patterns here that resulted in the board taking its action. The person was, had a receipt from that establishment, was found hours later in their vehicle by a Danvers police officer. Those, those facts are all not in dispute. The A.B.C.C. applies specific criteria in reviewing this. There seem to be two different thresholds, and I think that's part of the conversation is the, the local threshold versus the legal threshold.
We need to understand that, because you can't be spending hours and hours if it's something that we have no jurisdiction over, I mean, so.
I don't, and I would, I wouldn't say that the board doesn't have jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a, it's something, again, we'll, I wanted to offer a little context, and I think we'll want to get, we'll schedule a meeting and provide some additional information at the next meeting.
Steve, you want to come back to us next meeting with some update from Town Council and the police chief regarding the disapproval of our actions?
I think for the next meeting, the chief will be here for the Mexicali item that was just scheduled for the 17th, so I think it would be reasonable, we'll, we'll work to have an update for the board for the more recent incident on the 17th that he can report on, and I'll also have a conversation with council in the interim to, to see if we can offer some further guidance in terms of the decision that was just received by the town. some further guidance in terms of the decision that was just received by the town.
And I'm just wondering, do we want to keep them separate in our discussions, two different meetings?
I don't know that that's necessary. That's something I can follow up with you on after I have a chance to engage council.
So we'll look forward to hearing from you at the next meeting regarding the decision of the ABCC.
Thank you.
Anything else? All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, chief.
See you next meeting. Selectmen's new business. Gardner?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill?
Nothing.
Diane?
No, I had a wonderful summer though.
Wonderful, good. But that's old now.
No, 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 I still got two more.
Two more, all right. David, any new business you want to bring before the board?
Yes, thank you, Diane. I don't know if it's new business, but road resurfacing is taking place down at Lawrence Street and a couple of the adjoining streets, and boy, did they need it, and it's really going lickety-split today. And I think that by and large, we do an excellent job on our allocation of resource to keep our streets up as, as well as we can, so thanks for that. The other thing is, the, what used to be the Diversity Committee is now called the Committee for Civil Rights and Inclusion. And the committee has been discussing as a topic, the change of the name of Columbus's Holiday to something other than using Columbus's name for a number of important reasons, and that eventually, I know they're going to want to come before the board, with some recommendation for action by the board and the town with respect to that name. Steve may have other thoughts on that. I spoke with Steve about it today.
Yeah, the, David and I met this afternoon, as, as he mentioned, at the last Human Rights and Inclusion Committee meeting, the topic was raised. We had a chance to do a little research this morning. There is, there is actually a bill pending at the state to effect that change, and so that, if that law were to be passed by the legislature, that would apply to all towns and cities in the Commonwealth. Another path, presuming their support, towns, I think Brookline, I want to say Somerville, maybe Newton, have pursued this through their town meetings, which would be a proposal from this committee that would have to go to the board of selectmen, and then the Finance Committee, and ultimately, town meeting. But at this point, I think, you know, in my conversation this afternoon with David, he wanted to bring it to my attention that the topic had been raised at that committee. So he, and mentioned that he wanted to alert the rest of the board that the topic had come up. And it sounds like, in my recommendation, would be that this committee do a little more research in terms of what, first of all, what is the, you know, what, what changes would be affected by the bill that's pending at the state, you know, to the extent that the town would or would not want to support that bill. And then, and then more importantly, have a discussion about whether this is a recommendation they'd want to bring back to the selectmen for discussion, and ultimately, if option B were chosen, it would be something that would have to make its way to town meeting. But we have, at this point, haven't had a chance to review the legislation or reach out to any of the other communities that were identified in some of the, on the websites that we found.
Thank you. I don't know how far we want to go with this conversation, but if you have a quick question.
Yeah, very quick, actually. When you do your investigation or your, your research, would you let us know if Danvers officially recognizes or celebrates Columbus Day? Do we make a proclamation? Do we somehow say the state is set aside, that we, as a town, as a community itself, celebrate the holiday? Or is this really a state action?
Good question. Thank you.
Are we closed on that day?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a-
It's a legal holiday.
It's a legal holiday. Town buildings are closed, but the town itself, I can't speak to associations or groups within town that may have events on that day, but the town of Danvers does not have an official, other than the, again, the closure of the nonessential buildings.
And I, I don't think anybody's trying to remove the holiday.
Sure.
It's a renaming of the holiday, so I don't think that affects, I'm just wondering-
So there's a lot to get into, and I'd just soon wait till we get some thought from the committee themselves. Let them do their homework and research, and then it'll come to the board at some point in time, because I have 21 questions, but I'll hold off on them.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. The town manager will report to the board on-
Diane, before you go-
Yes.
Also mention, the Inclusion Committee is also working in conjunction with the town manager and Jen Breaker, who is now the liaison to the Inclusion Committee.
Oh, is she? Oh, good.
To attempt to, and I'm thrilled about that, and to attempt to come up with a flag policy. The selectmen, I think you and Bill remember being accosted by, by Gigi at a Martin Luther King dinner, and the fact that, the, I think that, in any event, we need a flag policy. The Inclusion Committee is working on it. Jen Breaker is very much plugged into that, and at some point, I suspect there'll be a recommendation and request to this board for the adoption of a flag policy.
Look forward to hearing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And the town manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David mentioned the streets, so they've been very busy, but the other divisions have also been very busy. The chairman and I had an opportunity on August 29th to tour the school buildings to see what the Buildings Division, Leaf Rockman and his team have been working on this summer. We visited Thorpe Smith and Highlands, and the two, the two big highlights were progress that's been made on the Smith School, as well as the Highlands Roof Project, that despite the contractors' best efforts to get a really difficult job done prior to the start of school, there's going to be some, some punchless work happening after the school year started, but they were able to get most of the disruptive work done prior to the start of school. And then a lot of the work in Thorpe School this year focused on some of the continued remediation work that we've been doing over time, swapping out floor tiles and ceiling tiles there. So, you know, Chuck Farrell and his Streets Division did a great job this summer, Travis Reardon and the Forest Street Division got a lot done. You'll see some within the next week or two, the tree outside of the clerk's offices, that, that part of the property is going to get a makeover, much like the front of the building did for Memorial Day. Aaron Schlufo in the Water Steward Division, and then Phil, Jen Waldo in the Equipment Division, keeping everything running behind the scenes. The guys go out and beat up the equipment to get the jobs done, and then Phil's team has to put it back together again when they're done. So it's been a very, summer, people think of the summer as being quiet, but DPW's been flat out getting all the projects done and ready to go for another school year and season. So I want to make that note. We talked about the two license violations, so I would note beyond that, just on September 11th, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce is having their annual State of the Region. It'll be at the Doubletree in Danvers, starting at eight o'clock. If any of the board members are interested in attending that, you just need to shoot and freight us an email, and we can get you registered for that. We have our Citizens Academy launching on September 12th. This is, there's going to be a little bit of a change this year. The town open house, as folks remember it, isn't going to be happening. Some of the, some of the highlights from that event, though, in terms of the Truck Day and the tour of the fire station and the police open house, will happen at different parts of the year. But we're going to be launching essentially what will be a semester for interested residents. And we were very pleased, we had 20 seats in the class, and we had more applicants than we had seats, so it was a competitive process, which we had been hoping for. So we'll be having our overview and welcome on September 12th in this room. Chairman Bennett has agreed to attend and offer a welcome on behalf of the board, and most of that night will be spent covering logistics and an overview of the town government and how it works. And then, over the course of the next eight or nine Thursdays, the participants will have a chance to see the fire station, the library, and the schools, and get presentations from each of the departments in terms of their service area. So we're excited to launch that. Assistant Town Manager Jen Breaker has led that effort, so that'll be, we're hoping it'll go well. We're sure, we're sure there will be some bumps this first year, and then between the waiting list for this class and next year, we're imagining it'll be even more popular as we go forward. And then, just briefly, it's mentioned under the selectmen's notes and reminders, but on, on the 17th, we have an executive session for 6:00 PM to do, to start the performance evaluation process as we do each year, and then that'll be an agenda item for the open agenda. And at 6:45 that night, we have our annual photo, so make sure you schedule your haircuts ahead of the 17th. And that's all that I have tonight.
Thank you. Back to the North Shore Chamber, that's the 11th, at what time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
At the Doubletree in Danvers.
Already, I know tomorrow that I'd like to attend.
Great, okay, great.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager, for anybody? Nope, thank you. Selectmen's updates, consent calendar. Consent calendar, please.
Remove, we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Selectmen's update and closing comments. Diane?
I thought the town manager would do it, but 9/11 is before our next meeting. I know Brothers does something, but every year, I go to the fire station, and I believe that's at 9:30 on 9/11. And if you haven't done that, they do an unbelievable job. Danvers Fire Station is 9:30, Brothers is 8:30, which is nice that they coordinate. Really is wonderful. You can park across the street, Jimmy's isn't open yet, and, but really, you should go to that. We should never forget what happened on 9/11. So I thank the fire department. They certainly do an amazing job with amazing, amazing respect for firefighters and for the civilians that died that day, so.
Thanks for bringing that up. I've attended both events many of the years in the past, and it's very well done.
Very well done.
Yep. And you'll be attending?
9:30 at the fire station.
9:30 at the fire station.
Yeah, just right in front.
Good, thank you. Thank you. David?
Nothing, thank you, Diane.
Bill?
I just want to announce that last week, I conducted the annual, annual new teachers' tour of town, the orientation tour for the teachers, that we spent an hour going all over town, go by all the schools, give a little tidbits of history of Danvers, and this year, we had 35 participants. I think it's the largest number of new teachers the town's ever had in one year. And I asked Lisa why there were so many, and she said, basically because there's a lot of maternity leaves this year, and they've got a lot of people that have been hired for one-year term. But 35 new people, and I didn't know any of them, and I never heard of any of them. It was great. Got a lot of young faces out there, that's going to be interesting.
Good, thank you. Gardner?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Town Manager, when we passed the bylaw banning plastic bags last June, we had given the retail establishment adequate time to use up their inventory. And I did mention to you that Shell Oil was passing out bags, and it's been three months since the ban took effect. Tonight, I got a call that Kelly's Roast Beef is giving out bags, and I believe in the bylaw, you were the enforcer or you're designated, so if you could pass that on. Thank you.